The special meeting of the Concord Board of Education to discuss the middle school project. Ms. Meager, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Boucher.
Here.
Ms. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Hastings. Ms. Higgins.
Here.
Mr. Richards.
Here.
Ms. Robinson.
Here.
Ms. Sadowski.
Here.
Ms. Wall.
Here.
And I am here.
And Ms. Hastings will be joining us in a little bit. She had a commitment. We're going to start with a very, very brief presentation, scene setting on the project, and then we're going to go into public testimony. So I'm going to turn it over to HMFH Architects to give us the three to five-minute rundown. How about now?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. I will do my best. Okay, so this is the site plan for the Runlet School. You can see the new building is in white, and that's going to be built adjacent to the existing building, which you can see in a dashed black line over those new fields. The building will get built while the kids are in the existing building. When we finish construction, we'll tear down the existing building, and we will build the fields that you see here. Some of the updates that will happen with this new plan is that parent drop-off will continue as it is now, coming in off of South Street. They'll loop around and drop the kids off in the front of the building. Buses will come in from the back on Cypress Street and loop around and drop off kids in the back of the building. Everybody will meet in the same place and enter to the main entrance, which is adjacent to the fields. So this is going to be safer than what we have today because it separates bus and car drop-off. Some of the things about the new building, it's about 214,000 square feet. It's much bigger than the Runlet today because today's building doesn't have classroom spaces that meet the state's standard size for classrooms. This new building does. It also has the support spaces needed for those classrooms. It also has a 450-seat multipurpose theater and a gym up on the second floor. Another nice thing about the new building is it's going to really help people teach the way they do now in teams. The existing building doesn't have the teams together, doesn't have the grade levels together. The new building will have nine pods with dedicated science labs in them, and those are along the bottom of the page. It'll have a band orchestra, music classrooms. It will have a multipurpose room and a gymnasium, flexible cafeteria, and career pathways would shop food tech. Up on the second floor are all of the exploratories and also the gym. There are two elevators in this building, and there's a ramp that allow you to get from the first to second floor easily. And third floor has more classrooms in the pods. Some of the features, it's a much more compact footprint than the existing building. If you've walked Runlet, you know how long those corridors are. This building does not have that. This will help with the performance of the building. It'll help save energy. It has a very high-performance envelope, which means it's very tight. It's also going to conserve energy. It has daylighting, so lots of windows for natural light. We won't have so much electrical use in this building. All of the mechanical equipment is enclosed on the roof so that it'll last a long time. It will have a geothermal heating and cooling system, which is very energy-efficient, and we'll also be getting federal money for that in rebates. And it'll also have solar, so it'll be net zero. So it'll make as much energy as it consumes. It'll have very durable materials, brick exterior, polished concrete floors, metal roofing, ceramic wall tiles like you see in here for longevity. This is one of the team pods that I was talking about. So each grade-level team will have three classrooms, a science lab, support space, and a project area. And there are nine of these. And there's a little image of it on the right-hand side. So this new building is estimated to cost $121 million. The site costs are just under $20 million for a total construction of $141 million. There are also soft costs, there's fees to pay, engineers, there's permitting fees. Soft costs also include furniture and technology for a total project cost of $168 million. You heard me talk about rebates. There are rebates and credits that we are receiving for things like the solar panels, like the geothermal system, and those total $13 million. So you may not be getting state money for this building, but you're certainly receiving federal money if this moves forward now. So those rebates will bring the project cost down to $155 million. So we did go through an extensive value engineering process after we got the estimates back to make sure there was nothing extra in this building, and we were doing things as efficiently as possible. Some of the things that the board looked at taking out, potentially the metal roofing, changing that to asphalt shingles, taking out some of the canopies on the exterior, maybe taking out the bleachers and the multipurpose, and reducing some of the tile heights, maybe not full height, but maybe at the height that you see here in this room. Structural, we're going with steel structure instead of wood to save some money. And then on the exterior, we've reduced the landscaping. There are other things on the table still that could be taken. I'm not going to read through them all here, but the board and the building committee have not opted to take those at this time because they are necessary to make this school function as it needs to. And now I'm going to turn it over to Jack to talk about the financials.
Sorry, can you hear me okay? All right, so for financial, this is a sample tax projection based on budget. So the left side, what that's showing is if, in fact, we took that number, took out the federal rebates, contingency, furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and technology, that would reduce the price by $26 million. We would use the board's facility trust fund to mitigate the tax impact, and this amount is before any additional value engineering or reductions. That would bring the project cost down to $144, or an additional tax impact of 53 cents per thousand. So on a $350,000 home, it'd be $186 in the first year, and then that $186 would reduce to $179. It's not concurrent, it's not 186, and then another $179, once you hit the 186, it continues to go down after that. On the right side, this is if we just take the rebates, leave contingency, furniture, fixture, technology. The board continues to use its trust fund that it's been saving for many years to mitigate this. And again, this is the amount before any reductions or value engineering. That would bring the project cost to the $155,718.01, 69 cents per thousand, or on a $350,000 home, $242 in year one, and then that $242 would drop to $238. And you may be wondering why contingency, furniture, and technology taking out of it. It is the process that we did when we did these schools. What we did is we took the risk based on pricing and tried to say, let's borrow everything but that because we don't want to be paying for anybody that's had a laptop or computer for 30 years, I'm sorry, but it's not going to last that long. So we don't want to be paying for those things for 30 years, and we would do shorter. Plus, they're also in our budget cycle, and we will also be due up for federal E-rate, which is called Category 2, to do a lot of the infrastructure. So we're hoping, based on our work with the construction manager, to really drive the price down and be able to not have to borrow for that other portion, or borrow for it for a lot less, or less than that amount. So what are the things that we have to think about? Obviously, we're working on several different financial plans. For the elementary project, the three schools from 2010 to 2012, there were 29 different variations of financial plans. We've only done a handful so far. Once the budget's set, we will get started on the project if it's approved. We will develop cash flow projections and determine when do we need the money to come in, because we may not borrow it all at once like we did 15 years ago. We may borrow it in chunks, depending on where the market is and when we need money. We will create flexibility for any additional tax impact for this to start, either in 2027, 2028, or later. So it's not, once they approve, next year is the hit. We're going to smooth that out. The other thing is coordination with the city on other projects that limit the tax impact. We know there's other projects, this isn't the only thing going on. Again, we would use trust funds to limit the impact, and we would also look at how can we pre-purchase materials and other things to drive the price down. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. With that, there is sign-up sheets in the table as you come in. I will go in the order that people have signed in. I am just going to note, a few people have sent in testimony in advance because they could not be here. I'm not going to read it, but I'm going to acknowledge them for the record. Clara Dietl wrote in support. Pam Wicks wrote in support. Rebecca Searls, I believe it's in support, although urges us to continue to look at the finances. Chris Galdery in support. Sarah Sartelli.
Sartorelli.
Sartorelli, thank you, all, in support. Joe Short in support. Betty Holdley urged delay. Leah Plunkett in support. Roy Schweiger urged reducing the price. With that, I will call up Nicole Fox to testify, followed by Leanna McLaughlin. Please keep your testimony under three minutes. I'm going to try and be fairly strict with that. You don't need to repeat. You can just signal to other people testimony as well. Thank you.
My name is Nicole Fox. I live in Ward 5. I'm a parent of three children in the district, a civil engineer, and I serve on the Middle School Building Committee, although tonight I represent only my own opinion. I would like to note that my youngest child is in eighth grade currently, and my family will not directly benefit from this school. The City of Concord needs a new middle school. We needed a new middle school in 2017, and eight years later, we now need one even more desperately. I'm part of the building committee, despite the fact that none of my children will ever attend school there, because I've been following this project for many years. And I am committed to ensuring the future children in Concord receive a great education in a safe environment. I have been to countless school board and building committee meetings, read the existing conditions report, toured the school, and been an RMS parent for the last seven years. The building is at the end of its useful life, and that's the truth. Currently, students and staff have to deal with extensive roof leaks, overheating in warm weather, wearing coats in classrooms in the winter. My kids have told me about the bathrooms, with only one sink or toilet that works, because the asbestos in the bathroom would need hazardous material remediation to replace the fixtures. There are a limited number of water fountains because there's lead in the plumbing system. This is not due to neglect, this is due to the fact that the district has been planning to replace this school for nearly a decade, and their facilities and maintenance staff have been doing everything they can to hold the building together without significant investments. No one wants to spend millions of dollars on new systems like a roof or HVAC for something they plan to tear down in the near term because it needs more than $100 million worth of work. Any renovation to these major systems would require compliance with current building codes. There's no other option. Recently, the district received a soils report for the property. As a civil engineer, I found it rather concerning. The ground under both the old and the new school are very loose sands that are susceptible to failure in an earthquake, causing sudden and uneven sinking of the building, which would cause cracks in the walls and the foundation with this brittle construction. If this were to happen with the current school, we would have an unusable school and an emergency need to build a replacement, which would be a substantially more expensive project. The study said that this would happen with an earthquake of magnitude 5.5 or greater. I was curious, so I looked up the last time Concord experienced an earthquake of this magnitude, and it was in 1940, when two of them occurred within a week of one another. And it was before Runlet was constructed. The new school will be protected through a more robust foundation and supporting earthworks. It's worth noting, the earthquake protection was added to the building code in 1991, the year after the newest part of Runlet was built. If we'd built the school in 2017, the costs would have been significantly lower than they are now. Unfortunately, we've experienced a global pandemic that disrupted supply chains and caused significant inflation, especially in building materials. I wish we weren't in this situation. I wish the state legislature would provide adequate education funding and building aid. But this is the reality we're faced with. The reality also includes a desperate need for a new middle school that cannot be held off any longer. Please vote to build the school now, no more delays. And if audience members who are here to support building a new school now, could please stand up to show your support.
Thank you. Linaya.
Linaya.
Linaya. Linaya, it was right the first time. Yes, thank you. Please, it would be helpful, because we all want to get home tonight at some point, to not have demonstrations and the audience on either side, except for you, because you're going to do a great job, I'm sure.
My name is Linaya McLaughlin. I am a seventh grader at Runlet Middle School. Before I came to Runlet, I went to school here at Abbott Downing. I remember my fifth-grade move-up day when we got to see Runlet for the first time, and I was shocked. Instead of the colorful floors and bright lights that I was accustomed to, I was met with chipped floor tiles, muted colors, and the overall appearance of an abandoned building. My first thought, we need this place rebuilt. While some people think that we shouldn't build a new middle school because of the cost, we need to build one because it will benefit future generations, make students more willing to learn, and the current building is unsafe. One reason why we need to build a new middle school is to benefit future generations. While I might not get to go to the new middle school, my little brother and his friends might. So will the kids that haven't even started elementary school yet. When I walk through Runlet Middle School, I see water-stained ceilings, broken chairs in every classroom, and lockers so old they're barely functional. Do we really want to keep putting kids through this environment when there is such an obvious solution right in front of us? Another reason why we need a new middle school is because a new school will make students more invested in their learning. For example, if you were in a classroom with old equipment, rickety tables, and dim lights, would you be excited about working in that room? Right now, middle school students are working in these conditions. At Runlet, chairs and tables break often, and the classrooms are too small to hold the number of desks needed for the students. Now, what if you were in a classroom with brand-new equipment, comfy chairs, sturdy tables, and bright lights? Would that change your mind? These are the things that a new middle school can give, not only to the students, but to the teachers as well. However, some people disagree. They think that we shouldn't build a new middle school because of the cost. This should be argued, though, because a new school will actually save money. Let's say we let Runlet stand as it is and let students keep going to school there. When we encounter a problem that makes the school unsafe for students, we not only have to pay to fix that problem, but we also need to pay to build a new middle school as well. We'd save money if we just took care of the problem now instead of letting it fester. Finally, we need a new middle school because the old one is unsafe. In my science classroom, there is a tile missing from the ceiling. One of my classmates asked our teacher why. He said that last year, he had been sitting in his chair when the tile fell on his head. While he wasn't hurt, the fact that this is happening is alarming. What if next time it's a student? What if they do get hurt? What if next time it's not a ceiling tile, but something even more dangerous? Before I finish, I would like to mention one more thing. The teachers at Runlet are amazing. They encourage us to grow in the classroom and truly want us to understand what we're learning. They do their best to make class fun for us, even when what we're learning is something that's not super interesting. Instead of worksheets on review days, we'll do some sort of fun learning game. It's time for the school building to reflect the quality of the teachers. We need a new middle school because Runlet is unsafe. Students will want to learn if they are in a better environment, and it will benefit future generations. The students that go to Runlet are the future of our community. The least we can do is help them along the way. Anyone who sets foot inside Runlet can see it needs to be rebuilt, but that can't be done by just one person. In order to rebuild Runlet, we need to work together, even if that means making some sacrifices.
Thank you. Jennifer Kuzma, followed by Steve Winnett.
I'm just going to attempt to talk into the microphone. Thank you. My name is Jennifer Kuzma, and I'm a resident here in Concord. I actually live right over here on the South End. I have two children in the Concord School District. My son is a sixth grader at Runlet, and my daughter is a second grader right here at Abbott Downing. Tonight, I'm here to voice my support for building a new middle school at the Runlet site. It has been well documented that the Runlet building is falling apart around the students, teachers, and staff. I support building a new facility to give our kids the best opportunity to learn in an environment that is safe, modern, and not a distraction. Weaky ceilings when it rains, an HVAC system that is unreliable, and an outdated facility all take faculty and students' focus away from teaching and learning. I understand the costs are high, but all of the options are expensive, and these costs are only going to go up the longer this takes. I also know that new construction will just be a disruption to many. As I noted, I live here in the South End, and I lived through the building of this school and the tearing down of the Conant School. I have cracks in my living room and dining room to prove it. But I understand the impact the construction will have on the surrounding neighborhoods. But I still feel that building a new school is the best of the available options for our kids and the community. This board has done its due diligence in looking into all the options, whether it's to renovate the existing building, build a new campus, or to build a new site, a new school on the site. This conversation has been going on for years. Now is the time to make a final decision and move forward. Please vote yes on building a new middle school. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have a letter from another resident who couldn't be here tonight, but I will enter it, but it's from Rachel Goldglosser, and she's also in support of a new school.
Thank you. Steve Winnett, followed by Chris D. and Peter Bartlett.
Thank you. I'm, oh, I'm Steve Winnett from Ward 5. I'm concerned that with the new school cost and the interest on the bond at a quarter of a billion dollars total, actually, a little more, $266 million, Concord residents' taxes will be going up through the roof. And that's at a time when other costs will be driving those taxes up, too. Concord can't afford this new school. You've been hearing about resistance to the new school over and over, although not here yet. The school district is proposing that renovation is not an option. That message fills their homepage, but they haven't said anything about it here yet. I hope we can approach this discussion with unbiased minds. Please consider the taxpayers who fund our school system. We are not a wealthy city. Our per capita annual income is below the middle of the New Hampshire towns and cities, $84,000. Last week, the Monitor said that if this new school is built, tax increases of hundreds of dollars on a home that's slightly below median value were possible. Young families are the lifeblood and the future of our beautiful city. We want to fill the new middle school with their children, but the cost of this project may mean they won't be able to afford living here. I know so many great young twenties and thirties-somethings who want to live in Concord, but they are already having a hard time doing that. Taxes that are even higher will drive them out. Yesterday, the union leader had a story from the New Hampshire Fiscal Policy Institute that said that over the past 10 years, the cost of living in the state has outpaced what families are earning. People are struggling with basic essentials, and that story was in the Monitor today. We have young people and working families here. Are we taxing them out of town? Jeff Hammond said in a letter to the Monitor that this feels like gentrification through taxation. A couple of years ago, I watched a woman at a city council meeting cry because of the unaffordability of the tax increases due to a $10 million unaffordability of the tax increases due to a $10-million golf clubhouse the city wanted to build. Can you imagine what these school construction costs are going to do to her taxes? The city's budget may not be in your control, but you must be aware of its proposed increases because all of the money comes out of one pot, and that's our taxes. We can't have it all. Both my sons went through the Concord schools. My family is grateful to our schools and our terrific teachers. We need an improved middle school, but do we really need a showcase school like what's out on the plaques there? Let's take an unbiased look at less expensive choices. I'm almost done. The district doesn't think restoring the existing school is an option. I think differently, and we need to take the option seriously and not dismiss it. I think we can come together and fix Runlet in a way that serves kids, respects the limits of existing taxpayers' pocketbooks, and makes Concord an even better place to live than it already is. Thank you.
Kristi and Peter Bartlett.
Good evening. I'm Kristi Dollett-Bartlett, and yes, I served in the New Hampshire House for 10 years. Been a resident of Concord for about 50 years. My kids, my husband's kids, all went to Runlet on Concord schools, and they're long out of the school. When my kids were in Runlet in the eighties, they talked about, this is the eighties, they talked about what poor condition the building was in, how many times Band-Aids had to be used to make it a comfortable school. Even in those days when there weren't computers in the classrooms, they still didn't have enough electricity to be able to run all of the overhead projectors, even the very basic electronics they had in those days. There were extension cords used when they did bring out those kinds of lectures. The increase in the taxes is going to cost about a couple of nice meals out, and I am willing to pay that $200 to replace Runlet. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to ask again, just for the sake of keeping this moving, if you could all hold your applause to the end. And ask Nancy, and I apologize in advance, Gilbats from East Side Drive to come up. I also just want to, for the people in the back or out in the hallway, there are a lot of chairs, they're just scattered, so please feel free to come in and sit down.
Good evening. I'm here to say that I can afford those two meals out also, and that I want to see the new building go forward. My one concern is that it is available to all children, of those who have handicaps, mobility problems, et cetera. I think that the, that that has been taken into the plan, as I spoke tonight with some of the people here. And I feel that that is, mobility is a big crisis with our kids today, and we need to make sure if they have a cane, if they have a wheelchair, or if they have imbalance, they need to be taken care of. So I am in favor of the building that has the best for all of our kids.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Charlie Russell, followed by, I think it says Larissa. Thank you. I should probably have one of the teachers here come up and help translate my handwriting.
So Charlie Russell of Concord. Don't put that clock in overdrive, and it seems like a few people are talking longer than three minutes. I'm a math major and an attorney, but let's do some numbers here. 4,000 students, 8,000 parents, they're not all only children, 12,000 people in a city of 45,000. It's under 30%. I'm part of the 70% that has to foot the bill on this, and I think the numbers we're hearing. Your board has a fiduciary duty to do what's best for all people, not just the 30% or less that have people in school. Let's do the math. Jack, I don't know where you got your math. 150 million divided by 30 years is 5 million a year. 4% on 150 million is 6 million a year. The first year, there'll be $11 million owed on that. To the extent you want to use trust funds, which is taxpayer money you squirreled away from before, but don't just give us one, two years. Give us the whole 30 years. That's what they did on Cape Elizabeth. In the spring, the budget, and I went to the budget hearings, the budget went up $3 million, and it was 3%. Well, the $11 million that I just cited causes on a $110 million budget, causes taxes to go up 10%. Let's give the truth to the people. Let's not play games only one and two years. The current Runlet school is 165,000 square feet, and from '98 to 2003, there were 1,300 students there and 90 teachers. Now, there's 775 students and about 70 teachers. Students are down 40%, teachers are down 20%, yet we're going to build a school for 210,000 square feet, 25% bigger than what we have. Two stories right now, we're going to have to add a third story. I'd like to compliment you on your lobbying effort using Channel 6, running lobbying about renovating, renovating, and talking about things. I question the use of that as a tool, but we'll deal with that later. Department of Education website reports that Runlet Middle School is in the lower 50% of schools in Concord, New Hampshire. Math average scores for the state proficiency, 42%. Runlet Middle School, 27%. Reading statewide, 51%, Runlet Middle School, 38%. The extra money you're spending on the schools needs to, needs to do the full mission of the schools to educate the students. In 15 years, the students aren't going to get a job because saying, hey, I went to a real nice school back in the 2030s. They want to know, what the heck did you learn there? How was your proficiency? We need to work and spend that extra money that you're putting into a bigger school. We need to do that and put it into math teachers, math tutors, and reading instructors. Madam Chair, I'm sorry to say you've been quoted in the past on Concord TV archives. If there's no state building aid, there'll be no new school. Your word is your bond. Are you a leader? You going to keep your word? I guess we'll find out tonight. The other thing is-
Mr. Russell, you've gone over your time by 30 seconds at this point. I've given you some leave. Larissa Koviel?
It's K O.
K O, I'm sorry.
My name is Larissa Cagle. I am a Concord resident from Ward Eight. I am a Concord parent, and I have a fifth and eighth grader in the Concord schools. I also work at Runlet as a speech-language pathologist. And I think that all of the issues have been really nicely discussed by all the speakers ahead of me, especially students with mobility issues. I work directly with those students, and I can tell you that getting a student in a wheelchair in and out of my office is extremely difficult. Getting them around the corners, having them, having their hygiene taken care of in the current building is near impossible. So I would like to urge that these students, and all the students at Runlet, deserve a new building. And I'd also like to talk about our staff members. I, myself, I don't know how many of you people bring in your own water to drink, to make cup of noodles with. The heating issue, had to wear a coat until we turned the heat on, so the heat goes on at a certain point in the year. I mean, the list goes on and on. So I live this, all of these people live this, and we really deserve a new building. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Bozeman, followed by Bob Brown.
I am a Concord School District parent. I have a child here at Abbott Downing, and I also work at Runlet Middle School. I think, I'm going to say, a lot of the issues that I was going to bring up have been discussed, primarily my concern. The school currently was built in 1957. It's not accessible to all students, as we know, and we really need a building that is accessible to all students. You have a really difficult decision to make, but you can make a great decision for all of our children, my children, your children, our students, by going forward, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Brown.
My name is Bob Brown. I've been a teacher at Runlet for 27 years. I am a resident of Concord, living on Wilson Ave, and I have put, at this point, three children through Runlet, all of whom voiced their opinions quite happily at my dinner table last night when they learned I was going to be here, reminiscing about their enjoyment of the facilities. Much of what I was going to say has been taken, so I'll keep this very brief. In that 27 years' time, I've been privileged to teach here, have loved it, and what I have seen in that building, unfortunately, is that we're at a point where if we are going to have a 21st century education, as was referenced a few minutes ago, for these children, prepare them properly for high school and for life in an employment market, as we send them onto that high school, then we need a modern learning space. It was mentioned several times that our classrooms do not meet the state standard. I think that's worth bearing in mind, a liberal, free, die-state. So in short, it's time for a new building. I'm really hoping that tonight, having seen this through the past 10 years, is not the end of the beginning, but rather the beginning of the end. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Patty Angeles, followed by Erin Thompson.
In the last couple of years, you have managed to lose-
Ms. Angeles, could you just put that mic down a little bit so we can hear you?
In the last couple of years, you have managed to lose the trust of much of the community you serve in so many ways. Maybe it's time to try and change course and try to earn back their trust. Start with number one: Not going forward with a new middle school this spring as proposed. Both the school board and the city council had unexpected costs crop up recently, for which they will increase tax rates. That doesn't include the new Runlet or the numerous projects the city has. These will further raise the tax rates. We're not a Bedford, or a Londonderry, or some other affluent community. We're a predominantly middle and lower-middle-class city. Please try to keep that in mind. Number two: Continue at Runlet for the next couple of years. Hopefully, there will be building aid at that point, but do some minor repairs and fixes that were obvious while touring Runlet. They would make the building more livable and improve the atmosphere of the school for that time period. Number three: The goal of the school, of any school, is to provide an environment where students can learn and thrive. I was a teacher in a small rural district in Indiana for many years. Our building definitely did not have any bells and whistles, and yet that's where I learned that with dedicated and collaborative teachers, administration, and staff, a place for learning and thriving is very possible. So the board in the next year needs to go back to the design of the building and the fields and fill it with only needed, necessary things, thereby chopping tens of millions off the price tag. A couple of things stood out to me while touring the school. Adequately-sized classrooms are a need. Adequately and equally-sized student lockers are a need. A teacher on the tour mentioned that the new design would have individual bathrooms rather than the normal ones with several stalls, one of which is handicapped accessible and a couple of sinks. The individual ones, which presumably would each need to be sized and equipped for handicapped accessibility, would seem to take up a lot more square footage and require more equipment than the norm. If this is the plan, it seems to not be a need. Will the usable furniture, whiteboard, science equipment, and so many other things from the old school be used in the new school? Or will everything be new? Everything new would not be a need. You asked us at the last meeting to come up with ideas of things to cut from the design. Besides what I've mentioned, it seems that it's the teachers who need to weigh in again, as they are the ones who will actually be using and working in those spaces. But this time, ask for lists of their needs, what they have to have. I know that a thoughtful and much-reduced-cost design can be accomplished.
Thank you, Ms. Angeles.
I'm almost done. And still be a place where students can learn and thrive. You just need to show that you can do it.
Thank you. Erin Thompson, followed by Meredith Telus.
My name is Dr. Erin Thompson. Oh, this thing's falling out. Shouldn't touch it. I've worked at Runlet Middle School as a special education teacher. I also coached basketball there. I have a son that's in seventh grade at Runlet Middle School, and I've spent a lot of time inside that building, and I know its strengths as well as its challenges. I support responsible improvements that prioritize student safety and educational quality, but I cannot support a $155 million new construction project that's going to place a heavy burden on, a heavy and long-term financial burden on the Concord taxpayers. We need transparent decision-making and fiscal responsibility, not just one high-cost option presented as the only path forward. I believe we can ensure a safe, high-quality learning environment without pricing families and residents out of their own community. Thank you.
Meredith Telus, followed by Stephen Mikulitz. Mikulitz, God almighty, boy, I have like a brain block on that, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Meredith Telus. I live in Ward Seven, right down the street. I have three children, one at Abbott Downing, one at Runlet Middle School, and one at the high school. None of them will benefit from a new school. I was in favor of building a school across the river. I think trying to site a school on this property is difficult. It doesn't afford the kids the exterior space they should have, but that ship has sailed. And if there's one thing that makes less sense to me than building on this site, it is trying to renovate the existing building. Please do not entertain that prospect. We all know what happens when you try to renovate. The cost and the time is going to be exorbitant. It is not the way to go. I'm asking the school board to vote in favor of moving forward with this proposal. This has taken way too long. You've all done an incredible job trying to make the cost as manageable as possible, and I want to thank you for those efforts, and please get a new school built for our kids.
Thank you. Meredith Cooley will be next. No, after you, after you, I'm sorry. On deck, yeah.
Steve Mikulitz, Ward Ten. Although I support the need for a new or renovated facility, and aside from my opinion that the proposed new middle school design, size, and cost seem to be well beyond what is needed to provide an excellent education for our deserving middle school students, I offer the following comment. To the hard-working and well-intentioned members of the Concord School Board, this will be an extremely important and expensive decision. Please do not rush into a vote on the middle school proposal, as occurred with the vote on December 6, 2023, before taking sufficient time to reflect on and discuss among yourselves in public session the information and opinions provided in testimony this evening by Concord citizens and taxpayers who will be greatly impacted by your decision for decades to come. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Meredith Cooley, filed by Reagan Bissonette.
Good evening. Thank you all for your service. My name is Meredith Cooley. I live in Ward Five and have two children here, one of whom is at CMS and headed to Runlet next year. I just wanted to say that I, I'm not going to reiterate whatever everybody else has said, but I support moving forward on a new middle school. And I just wanted to add that each six months of delay costs taxpayers roughly $2 million, about $11,000 every day, money that could be, instead be invested in Concord's future, and that's based on delay of building the new middle school, so no more delay, please. And I also want to thank all the teachers that are here tonight. You all do an incredible, excellent job, as well as the staff of our middle school. Our principal's doing an amazing job, and I just fear that we will not retain these excellent educators and that we will not be able to recruit more if we have a building that doesn't support what they need to do for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Jennifer Thompson, after I.
Good evening. My name is Reagan Bissonette. I live in Ward Five, and I have a fourth-grade student at Krista McAuliffe School. In my personal and professional life, I'm a big believer in reducing, reusing, recycling, repairing, renovating because of the financial and environmental benefits. I drove here in a 10-year-old car with 150,000 miles on it, and thanks to regular maintenance and- and thanks to regular maintenance and repairs, it is still going strong. However, there will be a point, perhaps in my near future, where the cost to repair my car is going to approach the cost to get a new used car. We are already at that point with the middle school, where the cost of renovating the school is such a significant amount that the idea of us trying to renovate the school instead of putting that money towards a new school seems totally irresponsible to me. I am concerned about the impact on taxpayers, and I appreciate that the school board has spent a significant amount of time, as well as the district staff, working on this project, looking at alternatives. And quite honestly, I'm really tired of coming to these meetings. I've lost track of how many times I have come to give public comment. My son begged me to not come here tonight because he'd rather we play a board game. So I just, I appreciate the time you all have put in. I really appreciate the time of everybody who's come here to speak, because this is such an important issue for our community. And I really hope that we can put this to rest and vote to move forward with a new school, because we need it, and our students and teachers and our community deserves it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jennifer Thompson, followed by Bob Wolf.
Good evening. My name's Jennifer Thompson, and I'm-
Can you get a little closer to it, Jennifer?
Yep. I am a resident of Ward 5, and I am a parent of a 4th grader at Christa McAuliffe School who will not reap the benefits of the new middle school. And I was also born and raised here in Concord, and I went to Runlet Junior High School many years ago, so I understand the circumstances. I'm here to express my strong support for moving forward with the construction of the new middle school despite the increased costs we are now facing. No one wants to carry additional financial burden on our taxpayers, but this project is no longer a luxury. It's a necessity for our students, our teachers, and our community's long-term success. We know that this middle school is no longer sustainable and is beyond the capacity and struggle to meet the educational, safety, and accessibility standards of our students. Delaying this project doesn't make the need go away. It only increases the costs in the future, both financially and educationally. The construction costs, as we know, are going to continue to rise. And every year we wait, as Reagan mentioned, we're going to add millions of dollars to the project, while our students continue to learn in an outdated and a non-inclusive environment. So in summary, I vote, I wish that you will vote to no longer delay this construction process for our students and our community and our long-term success. Thank you.
Bob Wolf, followed by Josh Snell.
Good evening, hard-working school board members. My name's Bob Wolf, Ward 7. This is a tale of two cities. Salem, New Hampshire is a much wealthier municipality than Concord. Median family income is $101,000 to Concord's $84,000. On top of that, it has a 30% lower tax rate. Middle schools in both towns have grades 6, 7, and 8 with exactly the same enrollment: 780 kids, both towns. Let's make some comparisons. Salem being a wealthier town with a lower tax rate demanded and got all the bells and whistles modern education demands with the Woodbury Middle School rebuild being finished in 2024 at 170,000 square feet, not 204, or 14, whatever it is. The rebuild being finished in 2024 at 170,000 square feet, well, all the bells and whistles a wealthy town wanted, they wanted for nothing. They could have built new, they didn't. Doesn't matter. It's the square footage, not whether they built new or not. The school is beautiful, and the taxpayers, teachers, students, and their parents are all happy with the results. Concord's HMFH architects' proposal is 214,000 square feet, 44,000 square feet larger than the wealthier, lower tax rate in Salem. And just for reference, a football field is 45,000 square feet. So basically, you've got a football field inside the building extra. With the state of New Hampshire canceling all state aid for the moment, Concord is presented with a perfect opportunity to pause the 214,000-square-foot, $164 million, quarter-billion with bonding proposal and invite at least two more competing architectural firms to bid, competing on price and architectural renderings for a new school of 170,000 square feet. When state school aid returns, Concord will be in line for at least $35 million, possibly much more, along with the $34 million reduction in the square footage at 170,000 square feet. At that point, the school will be well under $100 million. It's not hard, and that's just new construction. Then you can also subtract any credits and energy incentives that will be in existence when the new budget comes, time to be put together. And as for inflation, price escalation worries. The economy is way overdue for a recession when construction prices will be lowered substantially. By the way, Woodbury and Salem waited 14 years patching Woodbury Middle School until its turn came up in the queue. They remodeled eight schools, and this was the last one, waited 14 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Josh Snell, followed by Amy Golden.
Good evening. My name's Joshua Snell. I'm a Concord resident, Ward 4. I'm Runlet school teacher and soccer coach, and I'm fully in favor of building a new school. I've heard from certain members in the community a desire to patch, repair, replace, and renovate the existing building. Teaching English, I am no engineer, and will leave the cost-benefit analysis to those with more expertise. And in respect to acknowledging that those particular arguments should be one with numbers and not emotions, I will not regale you with the stories of teaching in a classroom where the roof leaks when it rains, a heating system that often guarantees 50-degree days or 80-degree days with little in-between of the bugs, the birds, and the roaches found each year, or being unable to run an AC because of an overloaded electrical system so that teaching in September, May, and June creates a sauna rather than a classroom. Instead, I want to address what only teachers and students would understand best: the structure of the Runlet building. Runlet's classrooms are too small and too few. There are several classrooms that struggle to accommodate 20-plus students in one room. 7th-grade classrooms that use thin-wall dividers, where little sound is blocked out, to divide already two small classrooms. And no room for growth in a city that is increasing its population by nearly half a percent year over year. This is unsustainable, and no amount of patching, taping, or glue will solve it. We need to have schools that can grow with the community, and Runlet has had its capacity, has hit its capacity years ago. The students have been resilient, the teachers and administrators have been mindful, and now it is time to make sure that the city keeps them all safe. The issue of a new building, I would argue, has already been forced. But the lack of space will only continue to worsen as years go by, and we all know that prices tend to go up, not down, over time. Let's move before prices continue to go up. Let's move before money has sunk into costs and repairs. Let's move before more years of students put up with subpar standards and lacking conditions. Let's make this decision now.
Amy Golden, filed by Donna Cassidy.
Good evening. My name is Amy Golden, and I live in the south end of Concord, and I have two children that went through Runlet. I'm also a 6th-grade math teacher at Runlet. In my 27th year of teaching, 25 of those have been at Runlet. If I've done the math right, I've spent about 4,500 days at Runlet. It's a long time. Both of my parents attended Runlet, and in fact, my dad, who's now 82, was in the first 9th-grade class back in 1957. And he told me recently that even then, the building had issues, and it's going downhill fast. Back in 2017, I attended the first meeting to discuss a new middle school. We were all so excited. I remember leaning forward and asking the superintendent at the time, "Do you think my son, who is in 3rd grade, will see a new Runlet?" And she said, "Well, if all goes well, he should be in it by 7th or 8th grade." Well, he's a junior at Concord High now, and we're still talking about it. The staff at Runlet have dealt with a lot over the years, and we've stayed patient. We've been told that we can't have new things because we're waiting for a new middle school. Still, we've made do. We've gone around to garage sales. We've scoured the scary Runlet basement, looking for bookcases, whiteboards, anything that we can find to help our students. We know some things just can't be patched up. The building's layout cannot be changed. We're not ADA compliant, we can't control classroom temperatures, and we walk long distances just to go to the bathroom, and one of which we share with students. I could go on, but the bottom line is simple: Our students and staff deserve better. And after nearly seven decades of waiting, it's time to do the math. It all adds up to one clear answer. It's time to start digging.
Thank you. Donna Cassidy, filed by Sue Hoffman. Donna Cassidy? Oh, okay, sorry.
I didn't hear you.
Oh, okay.
The sound system is not the best. I hope if you do vote in a new school, you get a much better sound system.
If you think this is bad, you should see the one at Runlet.
What did you say?
I said, "If you think this is bad, you should see the one at Runlet."
Well, my name is Donna Cassidy, and I am from Ward 10, and I do have two children who have attended Concord Public Schools. I'll be very brief. On December 6, 2023, at the Concord High School auditorium, a steady stream of people asked the school board to keep the middle school at South Street. The board heard but didn't listen. They voted to move the school to broken ground anyway. That night, Cass Ardinger, former chairperson of the school board, warned that if the board snubbed their noses at the community, it would pose a threat to the school district's governance. She was proven right when, less than a year later, voters resoundedly approved two amendments to the district charter. So now I wonder if the school board has finally come to understand what Ms. Ardinger was saying and what the voters said loud and clear last November. If the board now places an enormous financial burden on the backs of taxpayers, I would say, "No, they're still not listening." And I wouldn't be at all surprised to see another charter amendment on the next ballot.
Thank you. Sue Hoffman, filed by Deborah Samaha.
I'm Sue Hoffman, and I've lived in Concord now for 79 years, paid taxes here for 54 years. I agree that Runlet is in deplorable condition. It needs to be replaced or added on to, but mostly replaced. It's a whole other issue of why it needs to be replaced. I think maintenance hasn't been done on it for years, but that's neither here nor there. My taxes now, I live in a smallish ranch on a quarter acre. It's comfortable for me. I'm on a fixed income way below what the median income of Concord is. I pay $9,000 in taxes. If we take the cost of this new school, plus the cost of a police station, plus Memorial Field and Beaver Meadow, I'm going to be over $10,000 in my taxes. That's too much money. Concord needs to be a place not only for the white-collar workers, but for the blue-collar workers and the retirees. I love our children. I think they need a wonderful education. I'm all for that. But I don't think we need all the bells and whistles that this new program, this new school, is proposed to include.
Deborah Samaha, followed by Stephen White.
Hi, I'm Deborah Samaha. I live in Ward 7. I just have a few simple things to say. I believe that the current proposal before the board regarding the school is a price tag we cannot afford. We are facing a $5 million shortfall in tremendous special education expenses, which I imagine are not going away soon. I do support a new school that incorporates a portion of the existing structure, such as the activity room and/or possibly the gym. The current proposal of a gym on the second floor in the new structure defies logic for me. I sent a request over a month ago to members of the school board asking that you revise the estimate on the tax bill based on a more accurate assessment of a home in Concord of at least $450,000, not $350,000 that is used again this evening. For example, a new construction of a two-bedroom condo is going for over $400,000 in Concord. No one responded to my request. I want a new building that is affordable, functional, and that we can be proud of, and we need to work together to make this a reality. Thank you.
Stephen White, followed by Lisa Nordgraf. Stephen White, Portsmouth Street? No, I'm sorry. Lisa? And then Amy Schaffner?
Good evening. My name's Lisa Nordgraf. I live in Ward 6, about a half-mile from here. I have two boys who went through the Concord School District, and the next generation of my family is now attending the Concord School District. So very interested in how this goes, of course. 100% agree that the school that we have now is inadequate for the teachers, who I salute for everything they're doing, for the students. Every school I've been to in my life has had these issues. It's had disability access issues. It has had heating issues. It's had electric issues. I just fit it to another degree at UNH. UNH doesn't have elevators in our building. They have the same issues they're talking about. It's not because people don't care. It's because they're working within a budget. And they're working in what can be resp- working within the limits of what can be responsibly spent. Our students absolutely deserve, you know, better stuff and the best stuff we can possibly give them, but they also deserve not to inherit incredible debt and tax burdens. My two kids, who are now attempting to live in Concord and doing so only because their parents helped them pay their rent, neither of them are blue-collar workers. They're both white-collar workers. They both had education after high school. They're making good wages. They can't even begin to think about buying a house. You know, Concord, New Hampshire, has the fourth-highest property taxes in the country. And of the 234 municipalities in New Hampshire, Concord has the 24th-highest, which means, basically, we're in the top 10% for tax rates, the bottom 30% for earning rates. We are being taxed exceptionally while earning below average. Those numbers don't work. They just don't work. When the district considered the elementary school 15 years ago, it was said that no new building projects would be undertaken, and so that bond was paid off in 2041. Yet, here we are, okay? This is where we get into issues with not necessarily trusting the board, and, you know, it's hard, you know, when you see these things keep happening. And then the presentation y'all put up, well, the math major over here, gentlemen, said a lot more coherently than I can, but I don't feel it was accurate. I don't feel it considered the over $100 million in interest. And I think there's a lot more than two meals a year in play here. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you. Amy Schaffner, filed by Michelle Coop.
Hi, I'm Amy Schaffner. This is my 12th year as a science teacher at Runlet, and the building infrastructure is failing our students in many ways that have already been mentioned. The building is falling apart around us, including ceiling tiles falling in on my classroom fairly regularly. There's a closet down the hallway from my room that is filled with asbestos. There's lead plumbing throughout the school, which we had been using unbeknownst to us for food prep for years. And the sinks in my science classroom clog so badly after one class that some of them are unusable throughout the day because the clogs don't drain. These are all high-ticket items in and of themselves. The idea of renovating is just not plausible. The current building is 68 years old. We need a building that is going to last far into the future, not just the bare minimum. And I have a quote from John Green that I want to share to finish: "Public education does not exist for the benefit of students or the benefit of their parents. It exists for the benefit of the social order." We've discovered as a species that it is useful to have an educated population- We have discovered as a species that it is useful to have an educated population. You do not need to be a student or have a child who is a student to benefit from public education. Every second of every day of your life, you benefit from public education." So let me explain why I like to pay taxes for schools, even though I don't personally have a kid in school. It's because I don't like living in a country with a bunch of stupid people. Thanks.
Please, no, thank you. Michelle followed by Michael Murphy.
Hello. So my name is Michelle Rup. I am a teacher at Runlet, and I'm also a resident of Runlet? Nope, Concord. I live in Concord. I've got two little boys, one who goes to Abbott Downing right now and one who will in a few years. I am strongly in favor of rebuilding a new building. Renovating at Runlet, not an option financially, I don't think. The amount of things that would have to be done are just so expensive. And talking about having a school, someone earlier had mentioned, building a school that, we need a school that is able to allow teachers to teach the students, and they need to learn, right? Pretty basic. You could teach a kid outside. You could teach a kid in a basement. You can teach a kid anywhere. However, our population is so large and so diverse that the needs of each of our students is interrupted, servicing those students is interrupted by our building. My room is downstairs. My team with my other teachers are upstairs, on the other end of the hallway. And my room cannot be moved. I teach science. I'm downstairs. You can't move my lab upstairs. It's not going to happen in the current building. So the traffic, keeping track of kids, the safety, we do the best we can, but there's only so much that our current building can do for it. And as a parent, as a taxpayer, I also have, I live with my husband, who is also a teacher, and my mother, who is retired and on a fixed income. And we are in favor of this new school because we need it.
Thank you. Michael Murphy, I think Liz Murphy is crossed out. Okay, and then after that, Chris Poles.
Hello, everybody. My name is Michael Murphy. I'm a Concord resident, live in Ward 5. I'm here to express my support in building a new building. I had a lot to say tonight. A lot's been said. The one thing I would like to reiterate is, this city of Concord is a great community. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of people here in support of all reasons to look at a renovation option, the new building. Hearing a lot of great testimony from the folks who operate in the current Runlet Middle School, that being teachers. The design team has provided some insight into a great option. I think two things that come to mind that I've heard tonight is cost. And we also talked about schedule at other meetings. Those are two things that I really don't, put in the same category as education. That's where we're about is to find an opportunity for kids to be able to learn. The current middle school does not meet those state standards now, the bare minimums. I would like my taxpayer money, it's going to be expensive. I'd like my taxpayer money to go for a school that is for now, but it's also for 30 years from now. The reason why we're talking about this, because this building was built in the 50s. So it's beyond its life cycle. So I think that's something that we should think about as we make the decision. It's not an easy decision, but I think that it's one that we need to make, and I support building the new school. Thank you.
Chris Poles followed by Dan Hayes.
Hi, my name is Chris Powles. Sorry, didn't mean to correct you. I didn't bring a little note sheet. I didn't know I was supposed to do that, so I'm just kind of winging it. I'm here to voice my support for the new school. You know, one thing that we heard from the side, and I hear you, it's going to be expensive. Taxes are going to go up. But it was a lot about affordability in this town, which I think is a problem. But I don't think that it's related to this. I think, you know, there's another meeting probably for that somewhere. But I don't know that it's directly related to this. I mean, this is probably part of it, but I think there are other things that are causing it to be expensive in Concord. So I don't think we want to blend those two issues. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Dan Hayes followed by Ian McGregor.
Good evening, school board and everybody here. Thank you all for coming. My name is Dan Hayes. I live in Ward 10. I have three kids that have all gone through Runlet. One has come back and is a teacher at Runlet and Concord High School. Part of my job is to go around to all the different schools in the state. I've been to every single public school in the state. There's 328 of them. Runlet is the worst school I've ever seen. It is a dump. The way I look at Runlet and this whole process is, treat it like a car. A car you get so many miles out of. We've gotten 70 years out of Runlet. Unfortunately, you get to the point where you're putting in more money to fix it and keep it going than it's worth. That's when it's time to go and get a new vehicle. We need to get a new school. I don't want to have to pay more taxes. I'm about to retire. I'm not going to have, you know, a ton of money. But we've got to stop and think about the students and the staff. Who's going to be most disrupted by putting in a new school or building onto the old one? The students. So if we put the students first and say, hmm, why don't we build a brand-new school because it's not going to invade their school? They're not going to have to work through all the construction and debris and everything else. Us new school is the only way to go. I hate to say it, my taxes are going to go up, but we need a new school, and that's what I'm for. Thank you.
Thank you. Ian McGregor followed by Dana Folds. You can all correct me when you get up here. I do my best. Dana, Dana.
School board, thank you for being here tonight. I'm Ian McGregor, Ward 7. I have a daughter in kindergarten and a three-year-old at home. Trying to think of a good analogy for the situation we're in here tonight. There's been a lot of good ones. I like the car ones. Those are applicable. The one I said along was home repairs. I always think that it's going to be cheap. I always think that it's going to be quick. I always think that it's going to be easy. I always think I can do it myself. Until I open the wall. Don't be like me. Please, listen to the professionals. Build a new school and build it as quick as we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dana Folds followed by Melanie Leathers. I'm just going to also send out a last call for signups. If you want to speak and you haven't, now's the time to sign up because we're going to close the signups shortly.
Hi, I'm Dana Folds. I live in Ward 2. I have a ninth grader, and I've worked in the district for 10 years, eight at Broken Ground and the last two at Runlet. A new facility would provide a space and infrastructure needed to expand and enhance the innovative programs that we have at Runlet, especially our newly restarted robotics program, a maker space where students can explore STEM and engineering, and collaboration spaces for students that will foster creativity and teamwork. These spaces do not exist in the current building. And if they do, they often include broken cabinets, broken tables, and leaking ceiling tiles, or awkward-sized spaces that don't meet the needs of all students. Accessibility is another critical factor. The current building does not adequately support students who require ADA accommodations. A new school would ensure that all students, regardless of physical ability, can access essential spaces like the cafeteria, classrooms, and elevators. It's frustrating to have to tell a middle schooler striving for independence that they can't access the cafeteria by themselves because the counter is too high or the space is too tight. As a public school, we're committed to serving every student, and we can't do it equitably without a facility designed to meet the diverse needs of students. I urge the community to support this important investment and build a new school. Thank you.
Melanie Leathers followed by Robert Mancini.
Good morning. My name is Melanie Leathers, and I'm a parent, a taxpayer, and the school nurse at Runlet. My children are in fifth and second grade, and I hope you will vote to give them a new middle school with your, the upcoming vote. Unfortunately, my fifth grader will not be able to enjoy the new school, but hopefully my second grader can. In 1957, I have no doubt Runlet was considered an elite building, but apparently it sounds like it wasn't. However, 68 years later, the building no longer fulfills the need of the children in the district. I believe all the children of Concord, regardless of who they are, where they're from, deserve a building they can thrive and be proud of. The classrooms must be updated to meet our new standards. Our children deserve sports fields to match their drive for competition. They should have an auditorium to rival the high school so that their passion for performing arts help them grow. Our tech department should have the updated spaces for our budding scientists to thrive so they may contribute to our city and our state. Whatever the passion is of the middle schoolers, they need a building to meet those needs as we invest in our future. And as the school nurse and as the employee, we've already heard all the reasons why the building is not safe for any of us. The asbestos, the lead. The children shouldn't have to be expected to know what sink they can drink from, where they can wash their apples, and then potentially we're giving them lead poisoning and then expecting them to learn? It doesn't make sense. And again, it is also, it doesn't make any sense to have a kid wear a parka in one classroom, and then they're sweating as they go into the next. So I will leave you with this. The late Superintendent Murphy once said that we are the capital of New Hampshire, and we are the city, the state, and the late nation look to as a representative of us all. That means that showing the state we value, the value we place in our children and their futures with the investment in their education. I hope you will vote in favor to build a new middle school and give the children of the city the opportunity to thrive. Thank you.
Robert Mancini followed by Brendan O'Connor.
Good evening. I'm Robert Mancini, Ward 5. I'm the parent of a student who went to Crystal McAuliffe and Runlet and is now at Concord High School, which was built in 1927, and renovated and expanded. Enrollment in Concord schools dropped 13% over the last decade and continues to decline. In New Hampshire, 6% of kids are now homeschooled, and charter school enrollment rose by 44% in the last five years. In 2024 survey by the New Hampshire Department of Education, homeschool and charter school parents cited academics and curriculum as their top reasons for not using public schools. So more and more 21st-century parents are choosing to educate kids in their own houses or in schools operating in modular units, rented spaces, or older buildings bought from closed schools. Apparently, these 21st-century parents believe that it's not excessively expensive buildings that provide good education. Last year, Chairperson Walsh said, "There has not been a vote to build a new middle school. There's been a vote to design. Next year, the board could say, nope, we can't afford it." Next year is here, and nope, we can't afford it. The outgoing president of the Concord Chamber of Commerce told me last week, "You are about to see a substantial increase in your property taxes for a variety of reasons, not the least of which is the middle school project. The proposed building with zero state aid will be a knockout punch to exhausted taxpayers." In July, Board Member Robinson wisely said, "I do not foresee a brand-new middle school in Concord's future in any real amount of time at this point. It's just too steep of a tax ask from everyone." You're absolutely right. Mr. Dunn spoke only about the initial tax impact of borrowing $155 million. But as economist Milton Friedman said, "Keep your eye on one thing only, how much the government is spending, because that is the true tax. With bond interest, the true tax of this school is a quarter of a billion dollars." On December 6, 2023, a lame-duck school board shunned its constituents by voting to move the middle school to Broken Ground. Voters responded with two charter amendments that passed by almost 70%, taking with them two pieces of school board autonomy. I don't know if this board now will turn its back on people trying to make ends meet, trying to stay in their homes, put food on their table, and heat their houses. I do know that if they do, a third charter amendment will be on the way next year, and with it, a third piece of the board's autonomy will vanish at the voting booth. Thank you.
Brendan O'Connor followed by Rebecca Searls.
Hi, I'm Brendan O'Connor. I was born in Concord. I was raised in Concord. I got married in Concord. I live in Concord, and I work in Concord. I love Concord, just like everyone else. I can't compete with 79 years. I try, that's incredible, honestly. But I just, you know, I am in support of a new school, but I hear the wonderful passion coming from people who are opposing it. I just really want to keep in mind, you know, the overall costs in the end and see what you can do, because I do support a new school, but please make sure, you know, it is financially responsible, what we're doing. Thank you.
Rebecca Searls followed by Jennifer Lacy.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Searls. I live in Ward Sedeburn. I have a child who currently attends Runlet, as well as two younger children who will be going through the district. I previously had sent an email to the board, as Ms. Walsh had noted, making my feelings known. I just want to address a few comments from tonight. There have been comments made about ADA and accessibility being a choice. It's not a choice. We are a district of inclusiveness. It is something Concord has prided itself on. And I will tell you right now, my son is one of those students who cannot drive his wheelchair through your building. He cannot easily access bathrooms. He cannot easily access the nurse's office. Why is my son less important than any other child who is attending Runlet? And I will also tell you, my son came to Abbott Downing and was known as the mayor of Abbott Downing. Over at Runlet, I'm pretty sure he's aiming for president. Like, he brings so much to our community. So we can't think of the students who need additional support as less than because they're not. That is one thing I want to clarify. Additionally, if we think of our children as 30%, we are not thinking about them as being the next generation of teachers, attorneys, doctors, dentists, the people who, quite frankly, are going to take care of me when I'm elderly. I want those students to love learning. I want them to show up to school every day wanting to be there, feeling comfortable, feeling able to not be freezing, but instead be paying attention to their teacher. We've recently passed motions and laws around cell phones at school. Quite frankly, I think a cellphone is less destructive than being freezing cold or sitting in 90-degree temperature. So I know I made my previous thoughts known to the board through my email, but I just felt it was important to address some of these comments. Thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you. Jennifer Lacy followed by, I'm really going to mess this one up. Yulia? Yulia, okay, so you're next.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Lacy. I've lived in Concord for 10 years. I have a daughter who's a ninth grader and a son who's a fifth grader. Having seen my daughter go through three years of Runlet Middle School, I would express my concern about the heating and cooling issues, which are nuisances to most healthy kids, but actually dangerous to kids with asthma or other health issues. I would also express my concern about considering the hazardous materials kids would be exposed to if there was a renovation. I think the board has thoughtfully considered lots of options and maybe considered options to a fault at this point, resulting in delays in expenses. And I think the time to move forward is now. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Jamie Colby is next.
Hi, everybody. My name is Yulia Spanchuk. I live in Ward 5, and I'm here to voice my support for the new school. I don't have notes also, sorry. I do want to, I used to work for the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation for like eight years, and my job was to know the state. And some of the comments around the cost, the property tax rates, you know, they- property tax rates, um, you know, they, they just really got to me because in places that are more wealthier in the states, in this, in this, in New Hampshire, the towns that are wealthier do pay lower property tax rates because the properties there are more valuable. It's just the unfairness of how the system is set up here, unfortunately, and I totally hear the affordability of Concord. It is really devastating. It's gotten so much more unaffordable, but that's also partially because of really terrible zoning. We haven't built new housing in a while and, uh, you know, that's, and, and also there's quite a bit of just state land and lots of nonprofits in Concord that don't pay property taxes, and so it is unfortunate for us property owners to have to have that burden, but that is separate from the need to have a nice, vibrant, welcoming, joyful community that has a new school, that supports its students, that supports its young families. We're like, you know, facing a silver tsunami and I think we all need the nurses, the doctors, the firemen here who are well-educated, who are supported, and, and just the, the discourse for this town around its young families and around valuing youth and supporting schools and buildings that care for that and voicing that in a way that's just really demonstrating that this is something that matters to this community. That's all.
Thank you. Jamie Colby, followed by Roy Schwecker.
Good evening, uh, thank you for taking my comments. My name is Jamie Colby, I live in Ward Nine. I really appreciate a lot of the comments that have already been made tonight, both for and against. I am for a new school, it is absolutely necessary at this point. Our children deserve better than a building that is unsafe, leaky, overcrowded, and uncomfortable. It doesn't meet the needs, the current needs for safety and education. A few things I'd ask you to consider. Elevators, my understanding is I think we're doing just one elevator in the current design. We are doing two. Okay, never mind, I'll skip that comment. Geotechnical engineering report, it repeatedly recommends cone penetration testing, it's a subsurface, uh, field investigation technique. Do it, do it as soon as you can, because it will give you better design ideas. Um, the city has spoken and this is the site we're stuck at, so do the testing as soon as you can. I think it can add to value engineering options. Scheduling grant timing, with those poor soil conditions, just keep in mind, the geotechnical engineering report said that there might be a month to three months of pre-loading. Just be careful, that doesn't mess up your schedule if there are grant options or funding options that are contingent on timing and deadlines. If you value engineer, right, get the cone data and you can value engineer your foundation situation, usually shallow footings on aggregate peers, that's a good cost-effective option, but you have a timing problem, maybe, so make sure you're taking a look at that. Thank you, everyone on the board and the building committee, I really appreciate your time, thank you for hearing my comments, and, um, let's get this done.
Thank you. Roy Schwecker, followed by Jeff Wells.
Hi, I'm Roy Schwecker from District A, and I'll try not to repeat much of the stuff I sent in my letter, but more respond to things people are saying. And people are saying there's too small and too few classrooms. My understanding is the population of Runlet is way down from what it was built, so how come the classrooms are too small and too few if we have a much lower population? That seems strange. I went on the tour and it was very much about the high school I went to, the long corridors, the lockers and stuff, but the difference in my high school is my high school, there would not have been insulation coming off pipes and holes in the wall and missing tiles. And I've been given stories about why, it's maybe because they were trying to make it look bad to get more aid, or there's too few staff to repair it, or spend too much on contractors so that, uh, there's no money to do it, and any of those, I mean, the school will be ready for two years, we need to fix that stuff now. And the next thing is, if the real reason is the city doesn't want to maintain its buildings, why are we spending a hundred and sixty million dollars to build them a new one? And, you know, some of the things that have been said, like the two hundred dollars is, you know, two meals? I've never spent a hundred dollars for a meal, I mean, this is two Concords. You know, maybe school board members go out and blow a hundred bucks on a meal, but I've never done it. I mean, most of Concord has never done it, but those aren't the people that are sitting there. I mean, that's a lot of money. And as far as the building collapsing, well, I remember, nobody was on the board then when Garrison School was to be replaced and people were showing up with bricks and the school was falling down. Well, it was sold to Second Start, it's still there. They didn't have to spend all the money that the architect claimed they had to be spent. It hasn't fallen down yet. In fact, a lot of people might say it's in better shape than Beaver Meadow School, because it was built better. And the last thing I want to say about money is, if you're gonna replace a car, maybe you don't buy a Cadillac, you buy something that's more reasonable, so, I mean, I said, the median family income I got, which you have the website for, is seventy-eight K in Concord, ninety K for the state average, a hundred and twenty-six K for Cambridge, which is where the architect is from. They seem to think we're much wealthier than we are. And we, we just can't afford building the most expensive middle school ever built in the state in such a poor community. We try to pay the teachers some of the highest salaries in the state to get good teachers, but now, now can we afford to build them the best school too? And maybe you should ask the teachers' union, will they set the five-year wage freeze to help pay for the school? And maybe we could look at some other expenses if you insist on building this. Like, we have an assistant superintendent, but they didn't take over when the superintendent died, so what's their job? Maybe they can go. Maybe some of these other administrators can go. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Wells, followed by Sarah Newt.
Uh, good evening, Concord. I'm asking the board tonight to pause, not abandon the middle school project, so we can do one thing that has not been done, agree on a price that, that the community can live with. Right now, the project has a moving target. We've seen numbers from eighty million to a hun, over a hundred and fifty million, and each new presentation seems to bring another layer of uncertainty. Before we spend another dollar on design or permitting, we must stop and define the ceiling, the number that taxpayers in the city can reasonably support. Every major project needs a foundation, its foundation must be shared, a shared understanding of what we can afford. The budget should come first, the design should follow, that's not what we've done. Once we agree on what we can afford, architects can design a school that fits the budget, not the other way around. That number won't please everyone. Some will want everything new, others will want the least expensive route possible, but between those extremities lies a workable middle ground, a hybrid solution that respects both educational needs and taxpayer limits. Communities across New Hampshire have successfully found that balance, Concord can too. This isn't about delay, it's about getting it right. Setting a price point now gives clarity to the design team, confidence to the public, and credibility to this board. Without it, we risk designing a building we cannot afford to build. So I urge you, pause, define the budget, and commit to designing within it. That's a responsible path forward and one that will ultimately earn this community's trust and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Newt, followed by Gib West.
Hello, um, I'm Sarah Newt, a Concord resident, taxpayer, and sixth-grade teacher at RMS. I'm asking you to vote and build a new school. I'm lucky enough to have a classroom in the one-hundred wing, which was part of the most recent, uh, addition to RMS, completed in nineteen ninety, thirty-six years ago. I'm lucky to be in the one-hundred wing because my classroom is large enough to comfortably fit all of my students and allow for students in wheelchairs to freely move around the room. I cannot say the same for my colleagues in the two-hundred wing, whose classrooms barely fit the necessary chairs and desks and become too crowded once twenty excited sixth graders enter the room. Any student in a wheelchair or on crutches has no hope of moving around their classroom. The teachers at Runlet work hard to create a sense of community in our school, but it's difficult when the grade level is spread across the different wings of the school. The sixth grade has two-thirds of the kids in the one-hundred wing and one-third of the students in the two-hundred wing. It's difficult to foster a sense of community where the students are spread across different wings and we cannot fully monitor the hallways to ensure student safety. Finally, sixth graders are so nervous when they come to middle school, which is understandable. They're coming into a new building, meeting new students and new teachers. The Runlet building does not help their transition. It is sprawling, confusing, and overwhelming for students. They're resilient, they figure it out, but the new proposed school would be so much more conducive to a welcoming learning environment for all students, including all the future, nervous incoming sixth graders. Please vote to build a new school. Thank you.
Thank you. Gib West, followed by Teri Kelly.
So first, I'd like to thank the board very much for all your, all your years and years and years of work. I'd also like to thank the staff. I have grandchildren that are here at Abbott Downing and will be at Runlet. I spent forty years in education and I think that one of the things I learned that's critical that, to this conversation is that the morale of the staff in a building is key. And when you have to go to work in the conditions that are described to you this evening and still continue to work for Concord School District for twenty-seven and thirty years, my hat's off to you. I mean, that's outstanding, it's just outstanding. So I think the board knows where they need to go, I think they've heard again where they need to go, we need to rebuild now. This cannot be prolonged. We cannot go back again and again and again, hoping that something's gonna be different. And if we want to talk about money, then we better bring Kelly Ayotte in here, because the issue is not the people in here, the issue is how we tax the people of New Hampshire to pay for education. And it's never gonna change if we fight it with the board and we don't bring it to the people. We don't know how many students are in charter schools paid for by us or in homeschools paid for by you that don't want their children at Runlet School because of the physical facility that, that's there. So we need to change that paradigm, and if we continue to elect people who sign the promise and we're continue to beat up school boards and beat up taxpayers with property taxes, and that will never change. Thank you.
Thank you. Teri Kelly, followed by Dennis Casey.
Teri Kelly, I'm a, um, thirty-year district employee in Concord School District. My three children have all come through Concord School District and are now graduated. Um, you know, several years down the road, I may not be teaching at Runlet, but the one thing that resonates for me amidst all the other things that have been already talked about is safety and health. I think about that school that I have worked in for thirty years and I wonder sometimes the leaks in the, the roof, that they don't even know where they're coming from, they're probably going into the walls, so when you think about repairing it, I would just envision all of the walls coming down, um, so we wouldn't even have a school. So I am worried about my health in the future, based on working in this building for thirty years, so I think it's time for a new school. Thank you.
Dennis Casey, followed by Ally Snell.
Good evening, I'm Dennis Casey from, uh, Ward Eight. Can I ask a question? I haven't heard anybody ask any questions. Are questions allowed?
It, it is not a question thing, but if you have a question you want to put out there, then it might get answered during our discussion.
It's kind of related, uh, there's been a lot of comments about, uh, the size of the classrooms not being adequate. Based on what I saw in those drawings out here, those aren't adequate either. The state standard is nine hundred square feet for a classroom, uh, twelve hundred square feet for a science room. So I, I'm not, I, that's my question, is why are they undersized?
Well, we can address that during our discussion. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Excuse me?
Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Thank you. Ally Snell, followed by Stan Landry.
Good evening, hi, I'm Ally Snell. I am a resident, taxpayer, full-time working mother, living here in Ward Seven. I have a daughter who is a fourth grader here at Abbott Downing, I live across the street. Um, I want to first thank the board for all of the work that you've put in. I, I'd like to also point out that this work has been ongoing for almost a decade now and here we still are. And if we had proceeded with decisions, assessments, plans that were previously made, we'd probably not really be in this conversation, but again, here we are. I'm many things in this community, but I'm not a structural engineer, I'm not an architect, I'm also not a teacher, and I'm not a student who has to live in that building that should be condemned every single day. I'm not thrilled that my child is going to have to be in a building where there's lead pipes, asbestos, leaks, doors that lead to the outside that don't lock properly, which is a huge issue, among many other things. I understand, as a taxpayer, whose taxes have gone up substantially in the last few years, that we are in a housing and affordability crisis. These are problems that are far bigger than just what's happening here. Let us not hold our kids, this neighborhood, and our schools hostage because of the problems that are way far outside of the realm of control. Let's not quibble over demographic interpretations and let's not nickel and dime our kids. That is not gonna make this a cheaper project, it's not gonna solve these issues. The longer we keep having these conversations, and I hope to God, a decade from now, we are not still here, the more expensive this is going to get. It is going to be painful, it sucks. We've already talked about that, it's been said much more eloquently than I will, but we cannot delay any further. So again, I am here to support my, my support for getting this project done as quickly as possible, and I hope that all of the community members here can agree, they want what's best for our kids. We don't want them drinking from lead fountains, we don't want them in a building that could literally collapse, and furthermore, we don't want our teachers who work so hard, who have to be here tonight, when you have to be back here in like twel, less than twelve hours. Thank you, by the way, for being here, and let's show them some respect, let's just, let's just get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Landry, followed by Greg Tufts, uh, not Steve, Stan, I'm sorry.
Is it Sean? My penmanship's not very good.
Sean, okay, I wasn't guessing that at all.
Sounds good. So I'm Sean Landry, uh, I live in Ward Five. I, I just think we've talked about this long enough. Um, I, I think out of anyone in this room, I might have the most to lose. Uh, I'm a managing principal at Valley Brunzinger, I'm an, an architecture firm that competed with HMFH for this job. Unfortunately, we weren't selected. I've als, what's that? I've also seen lots of articles about Woodbury School and papers and things like that, which we were the designers for. I just want to reiterate, um, you know, I, I don't, I'm not a doctor, I don't tell doctors how to do surgeries. Um, HMFH is a very reputable firm, Harvey is a very reputable contractor, um, and they have looked at this for dec, for a decade. Um, when I moved to this community, um, my daughter was starting school, uh, she's right there, she's a sixth grader. You, you are missing my, uh, this generation, my, my kids, they, they aren't gonna get to go to this school. So not only are my kids not gonna get to go to this school, but I'm losing out on work because it sounds like people want to go back out for design architects. Um, I just think, whatever, could it be more cost-effective? Sure, um, but whatever you might save, you will spend that in redesign fees and just time. Um, and so I think right now, we just need to move forward, we've done our due diligence, it's been ten years. Let's, I hope that you have my support in, uh, voting yes.
Thank you. Craig Tufts, followed by Andrew Georgovitz. Craig Tufts followed by Andrew Georgivitz.
Hi, I'm, uh, I'm Craig Tufts. I'm from Ward Seven. Um, I've been following this since 2017 and read all kinds of documents for a long time. I just wanted to say that I'm in support of the new school for all of the reasons that everybody said before me. I think trying to save money by delaying or reusing the old school is just not going to be cost-effective in the long run. It'll end up costing more. I also want to say that, you know, I respect a lot of my neighbors that are talking about the taxes and the cost, and that's legitimate. And I think as a board, we all have to work on building and maintaining trust. And I say that like it's easy and to be considered transparent and everything, but I appreciate all that hard work, and that's just as important as the vote tonight in the long run.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Georgivitz followed by Bob Washburn.
Hello. My name is Andrew Georgivitz. I live in Ward Nine. Born and raised here in Concord, thirty-eight years. Some teachers, former teachers in front of me and some friends that I graduated high school with. On the back of the shirts, it says nineteen fifty-seven. That's, um, what Runlet was built, and that's fantastic. And as being someone who's in construction, dealing with remediation on a daily basis, I look at our new police station that was built in nineteen fifty-eight. And what are they doing? They're renovating it. So over the course of one year difference, they're going to be able to salvage the Concord Insurance Group building. One, because it has ten-inch-thick concrete floors, which will make it a bomb shelter. But in addition to that, the bones are good. No disrespect to the architects or to the people that walked through and gave comments to the monitor, but where's the structural engineer? Where's the HVC tech? Where's the roofer that's going to be commenting? Those are the people's opinion I want to hear. That's, we don't seem to be getting. Two and a half years ago, when we voted to have Runlet stay where Runlet is, I said, and we heard from teachers, and I feel bad for you, that your roof is leaking. If my roof was leaking at my home for two and a half years and nothing happened, I'd make a phone call. I'd call somebody. As I've stated before, I pay ninety-one hundred dollars in taxes. Where is the maintenance happening? It's not. If these problems happen, where a roof is leaking, hot, cold, that's fixable. These things are not, the building's not falling down. Pieces may need to be fixed, but the walls are not caving in. If this was a true safety issue and kids were falling and roof tiles were killing kids, you wouldn't be in this school. That's a fact. It'd be on the front page of the paper, and every news outlet in America would say Concord's crushing children. That's not happening. I would ask everyone, pro Runlet, against Runlet, has said they understand the tax burden. I don't think everybody knows how much this is going to hurt the taxpayers in Concord. The city budget's off by five million, the school budget is off by five, six million, and now put on another two hundred million? Who's going to pay for it? We don't have the infrastructure to even support anything more to Hall Street, to the wastewater treatment plant. One wrong flush and it might be coming back up. So before we decide to spend money on a school with a declining population in Concord, that is a fact. New Hampshire as a whole for the past decade has had a declining population. I would ask us to pause this project, reevaluate. Nothing against Harvey, they're a wonderful GC. I did Woodbury Middle School with them, with Bill Conti. I did Salem High School with them, renting them equipment, working with them. But every pipe back in the day was, had asbestos. That's what they did. Every pipe was lead. Nobody died back then because nobody was eating the pipes. Nobody was eating the asbestos. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Diggle followed by, oh, Bob Washburn followed by Tom Diggle.
Good evening. I'm Bob Washburn, formerly longtime resident Ward Four. Oh, sorry about that. Now a, a resident of Ward Eight. Uh, Runlet has been Concord's version of the movie Groundhog's Day. Okay? You keep debating and debating and debating. You don't look at Runlet as a real asset that it really is. My recommendation, which will be ignored, is you redo Runlet, you expand it. You use your twenty-five million dollar reserve fund, which would cost the taxpayers nothing. You're looking at a horrendously expensive new school. It would be nice if we could afford it. I don't think we can. I look at all of the combined capital budget items between the school and the city, and that number keeps getting nervous. The, uh, new police station is estimated on a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house to be four hundred dollars a year. The school board and the city will be looking at a redo of Memorial Field, another big ticket item. I just don't think we can afford it. Unfortunately, the city council has not been aggressively seeking and finding industrial developers to come into Concord. We have four thousand housing units in the pipeline with no sewer capacity at either Hall Street or Pennacook. How that came about, I don't know. But I really quest- I, I'm not really looking for a pause. Uh, I, I'm really looking for a hard look at a redo of Runlet and a relook at the financial implications of a new school. Thank you.
Tom Diggle followed by Alex Streeter.
Hey, everybody. Uh, my name's Tom Diggle. I'm, live in Ward Seven. I have a seventh grader at Runlet. In fact, she's third-generation Runlet. My parents went, I went, and now my daughter goes to Runlet. Uh, I think it has served this community incredibly well, and it's the heart of the South End, and that's why we're rebuilding at Runlet. I'm full support of putting the new school right on the fields where they currently exist. We've done this before. We're sitting in a brand-new, beautiful middle school that everybody really cherishes. And so let's do the same for Runlet, and I think that we can, and I understand the challenges. They're bigger than just Concord. But let's invest in our students. I've seen the teachers and administrators build a great culture of the Blue Dukes here in the situation that you have, and I thank you for that. So let's invest in our students and teachers and build a great community with a great school, among all of the other things that are going on in Concord. I think we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Streeter followed by our last speaker, Nathan Madolo.
Almost got to close things out. My name is Alex Streeter. I live in Ward Seven. I've been to a lot of these. Uh, it's going on long enough that my youngest daughter, uh, who's presently in fifth grade, probably will not be able to use this new school when it is finally put together. I still want it. I'll still pay for it. I'm not interested in waiting to see construction costs continue to increase year over year. The notion of waiting for school state aid, uh, sorry, state school aid to come back? Fantasy. The skinflints at the Capitol and in the governor's office are too busy pushing voucher programs, divisive concept bills, and thumbing their nose at the state Supreme Court's numerous rulings on adequate education funding. I would not expect them to be our savior here in trying to make the numbers pencil out. They pulled the rug in two thousand nine. They pulled the rug again this year. I wouldn't expect them to be where our budget comes from. That said, uh, I am interested in seeing if the price tag can be brought down by changing the feature set. Maybe reduce the square footage, maybe ditching the auditorium, maybe fewer flex spaces and tech classrooms, which seem like electives rather than core necessities. Missing, however, from all of this has been a proposal of some of the various trade-offs. What is the savings if we were to get rid of the auditorium? There's no line item for that. What is the cost savings if the board decided to remove this item or that item? You have asked us over and over for suggestions. You've heard some tonight. Some others that I have include the, uh, the additional bandrooms at the back of the building. They're all two stories high. Why can the footprint of the school not be reduced so that they can be consolidated or stacked on top of each other? Regardless, um, you've asked us to make suggestions. Instead, I think what the community would really like are options. Please provide us with options that we can then endorse or strike down. Thank you.
Nathan.
Hello. Can you hear me? Nathan Madolo, uh, Ward Six. I have a sixth grader at Runlet and a fourth grader at CMS, and I voiced my support for the new school. Just want to comment, there's been a lot of stuff today. I'm going to try not to repeat what's been said, but this board's duty is not to lower the taxes of the community or to lower home costs. This board's duty is to provide an adequate education for its students. We know that Runlet doesn't do that. There are classrooms that are not adequate. There are, the school itself is, is not consistent with a modern education. We've heard real and severe risks of the classrooms from the teachers themselves. So, you know, I hope this board doesn't wait to take action for a new school until there's been a child who's had a piece of ceiling land on them, which was suggested earlier this evening. There's real risks and liability costs of not moving forward with the new school now, and I hope the board takes those into consideration. The idea that this is the first time these options have come before this board or this community, I think is frankly not true. There's, were earlier plans before the Clinton Street option. There was the Clinton Street option, which was voted down for, for different reasons. And then there was the Heights location. So there's been a history of other potential options that have come before the community that have, and come before this board. And so this is not the first time that we're looking at a new school. I believe that the board has taken a diligent, reasonable, long process to get to where we are today, and the students in this community need a new school. We have a responsibility as a community to provide that for the students, and I think this school does that. Uh, the last point I want to make is, you know, the, so I've heard some argument tonight about not fixing the school is going to somehow entice people to move to Concord. I think it's the opposite. If we don't replace the school, if we don't do what we need to do to make sure the people that need to work at the school for our children want to stay at the school, we're going to continue to put ourselves behind the eight ball. We're never going to make forward progress as a community, and we're not going to do right by the students, which again is what this board's duty is, to provide an adequate, adequate education to them. So, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, thank you all very much. I'm going to close the public hearing. And, uh, take a five-minute bathroom break for those who need it, or a stretch break. I think there were some cookies in the back. Maybe there's still some cookies?
We'll be back in five.
We will be back at eight o'clock.
Is this a big guy?
But I don't know, he's not mewing the camera. Oh, we're all set? Great. All right. I'm just going to start with a couple of questions that came up, and turn to the architects if you want to address the classroom space differences between the two buildings.
Is this on?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
Can you hear it?
Yeah.
Oh, awesome. Okay. So the classrooms are 850 square feet in the new plan, and that is so that we can have space outside of the classrooms for support space. There's project area space, which is 900 square feet outside of each pod. So there's three general classrooms at 850, there's a project area at 900, and there's a science lab at 1200. There's a small group room and a medium-sized group room. The way we get those extra spaces is to take a little bit of space out of each of those classrooms. The same thing happened in all of the elementary schools and were approved by the state. There's small group rooms and there's project areas in this room, in this building, to support those classrooms. Just for comparison, the Runlet classrooms start in the 600s, 600 square feet, for the same amount of kids, and most of them are in the low 700s. It's a very big difference from 850 square feet.
Thank you. Any other questions? And I just wanted to ask Mr. Dunn to address the tax rate questions that were raised. The numbers you presented are one version of, but they're inclusive of interest.
Yes, correct. The bond schedules come from the financial advisors both used by us and the city, and we run those out, and we benchmark that against the trust funds, where your debt is, and unlike a homeowner whose debt is the same, our debt goes down every year. So as those debt go down and their savings, we put it away. All that is factored in to those numbers.
So that number is the tax rate increase?
Yep, that's the increase, and then once you go there, it continues to go down.
Does anyone else on the board have questions? And I just wanted to, because our facilities team does a really great job, I do want to say, we actually patched the roof at Runlet last summer, or this summer, and there's been continued work, it's just you can only get so far with patches, as we will discuss, but it hasn't... They are, they continue to try and keep that building going. So, I just wanted to think... Oh, and the one other thing that someone raised was about, I just want to point out that we did do a bid process for architects about two and a half, three years ago probably now, and that was an inclusive process. We got bids, we had a committee that included members of the public as well as staff before we chose an architect. So there seemed to be some suggestion that we hadn't had that process, so. Other than that, I will open it up to the board for discussion. Ms. Hastings?
Thank you, and I want to thank everybody that has come out and talked with us and written letters to us. All of the points, I think, are very valid and things to be considered. We are a city that has not seemed to invested back into the infrastructures for several years. I don't know how else to explain that we don't have, we need a new school, we need a new fire, police station, and we need Memorial Field, you've got the golf course, all of these things that need to be addressed that we keep putting off, and the more we put them off, the more expensive they become. So we, as a city, I think, really need to take a hard look at what have we been doing over the last 10 or 15 years? Is there a plan? Do we have a plan as a city going forward so that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we have multiple projects that all come due at the same time? I urge the city council to reinstate the fair share to the state and to all nonprofits that are in the city. We have to increase our tax base. We cannot keep relying on homeowners to do this. So we've got to start looking at other ways to bring revenue into our city, and if we're not going to invest and really court industrial companies to come here and work, then we've got to find another way to increase that tax base. And I think a very reasonable way would be a fair share on the state buildings and all of the multiple nonprofits that we have. I think our board works very, very hard, long hours, to do what is best for our community and our students and our staff. It has become evidently clear to me over the last few years that there is no way we're going to make everybody happy. Somebody's going to be mad at us no matter what we do tonight, or tomorrow night, or next week, or next year. But threatening us every time we don't do something that you like with a charter amendment, it's almost bullying, and you should be ashamed of yourselves for doing it. Work with us. Help us find a solution that works for everyone. Don't just threaten us every time we do something that you don't feel is in your best interest or in the best interest of a group of people. You haven't sat where we sit, you haven't had to make the hard decisions we have to make. And so I find it offensive when people come up here and threaten us with another charter amendment because you don't like something that we may do, that we feel is in the best interest of the city, after looking at all of the extensive options to us. So whatever happens tonight, some people are going to be ecstatic and other people are going to be really, really angry, but I hope that you understand that every single person up here is doing what they really feel is best for our community, and that includes all of the people sitting in this room. You are part of the community, we are part of the community. We're not out to hurt anybody. Thank you.
Ms. Robinson?
Where is it?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought she was just holding it.
I'm going to stand up so I can see everybody. I'm going to follow Brenda because any healthy board is going to disagree quite a bit. And if the school board in December of 2023 had listened to the 90 people or so that said to build the school at Runlet, there would not be two charter amendments that seem to anger her, which is rightfully so, I guess, and we'd be two years into construction right now. That building next door wouldn't exist, and we'd be building the new school. So I want to apologize to a lot of the teachers and staff and students that have had to continue to go to school in that building because we could be two years into it. That's just the hard truth. Am I going to be liked by my board members for this? Probably not. But I didn't run for the board to have quick meetings and everyone agree with me, and Brenda's right. If half the world isn't pissed off at you, you're not doing a job right. But I was elected by you. It's my job to listen to what you all say. I was looking at social media today, and things like this bring out the worst in people, and a Runlet staff member on social media said they were tired of random retirees, rando retirees, talking about something that had nothing to do with them. I'm sorry. If we are expected to treat children equally, and we all matter equally in the eyes of the government and the Lord and the universe and whatever, I think rando retirees are just as important as 13-year-old students. I found that comment indicative of what's wrong here. What's wrong is that we all think we have the right to be mad at each other and make that what this is about. I don't feel good at all about spending $155 million on a building, I do not, and that comes from my experience here. When you've lived in a place for a long time or been on a board for 13 or 14 years, Groundhog Day reference was made, there's a saying in recovery, "The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different outcome," and here we are. Much of the conversation tonight is no different than it was two years ago. So what do we do? These people are right, the building is unusable in many ways. Is it going to fall in and collapse on somebody? No, but it's not fair. Those kids are in a miserable middle school. But those of us old enough to remember the promise from the superintendent and school board at the time those elementary schools were built, that the new middle school wouldn't be started until 2041, this is hard to take because it feels like it happens again and again and again. Here's another Groundhog Day for you. It's like new math in education, you know, every 10 years they give you a new way to teach something. I don't quite know what to do. I feel like whatever decision I make, again, somebody will be mad. If I vote no tonight, it's not because I do not want you all to have a new school right now. I do. I'm just incredibly frustrated that we're here now having this conversation, and that there are board members or people that think it's your job to make our job easy. It isn't. It's your job to make us work hard. It's your job to make us think twice about what we're doing and what might be the ramifications of that. I want a new middle school as fast as possible. How about you build us one for $100 million? I remember about my third year on the school board, Chris Rath, then superintendent, Jim, you were here. We had a budget, and she came to us and said, "There's no way we can do this, so I want you to make believe you have to cut $1 million off." And we all sat and we cut $1 million off, thinking we really couldn't. I just feel that if we were a school district that said, "Here's our limit, we can spend $100 million on a middle school," that we would find a company that would build us a middle school for $100 million. I do not think that's unreasonable. Now, is that going to cost another year of you being in a horrible building? Yes, so what do we do with that now? And round and round and round we go. I apologize for all of it. I'm one of nine voices, I have my opinions and my feelings and my thoughts, but this whole thing was unnecessary, and we're paying the price for that now. So I'm not sure what to do. We need to start a new middle school as soon as possible. We cannot spend $155 million. Those rando retirees' meals and grocery bills are just as important as somebody else's dinner out. There is no one right or wrong way here. We have to find a middle ground and a balance. That's just how I feel.
All right. Hi. We have to talk about the statewide education property tax, because that's at play here. So the state calls it a state tax. It's about 3.6% on your tax bills, and the state says your community must raise 3.6% of your property taxes and designate it to your school district. And the state takes all the credit for it, but those dollars never get sent back to Concord, the community holds on to them. So when we're talking about really wealthy communities, or some of the communities that we refer to tonight, like Salem or Nashua, they more than triple raise what they need through their statewide education property tax because of the tax base that they have. Concord unfortunately doesn't benefit from the statewide education property tax in the same way. So we're all up a creek, y'all. The way that we choose to tax ourselves is completely regressive, and it's made us come to this conversation. I don't want to not like my neighbors, and that's what it's sounding like, and that's kind of depressing. I love this community. I gave three years not tucking my kids in at night so that I can be here and listen to people throw quotes back in my face or, you know, bring all sorts of nonsense to a conversation. I'm real tired of it, and I think there's a willful ignorance about the way that we tax ourselves in this state, where people need to have a real hard look at what they're doing in the state house or not doing at all. Our Supreme Court has multiple times said, "We have not been fulfilling our commitment to education for 40 years, you guys." Why is that rage and, you know, all of this divisiveness? Why are you directing it at your neighbors? Direct it at the state house, call the governor. That is the root of the issue here. It's all state funding. It is not us trying to keep our homes, send our kids to school. And I'm real tired of having to say this every time we have one of these meetings. So I ask you, please, instead of turning to the person, turning to a teacher and saying, "Tough break?", that you turn to your state representative and say, "I'm sick of having to tell my teachers that they have to work in subpar conditions." That's not the kind of community I want to live in. Thank you.
Again, if we could hold the applause until we get to go home. I'm going to put a motion on the table for discussion purposes in part. You know, the board and the building committee had a joint meeting where they went through and looked at a lot of things that could be subtracted from the school, and I want to give board members the opportunity, if they choose to make motions, to, you know, revisit some of those things. And I'll go over some of the bigger ticket items when we, after I make the motion, if it gets a second. So I move that having held a public hearing on Thursday, October 23, 2025, having considered public input, having investigated feasible options, having sought municipal input, and having considered matters related to zoning and land use, pursuant to RSA 199:1, the board approves the replacement and reconstruction of the Runlet Middle School adjacent to its current location at 144 South Street in accordance with the design development plan, specifications, and designs submitted by its architects, engineers, and contractors, and that it approve a gross budget of $168,77480, inclusive of credits and rebates of $13,58679 for a net project cost of $155,718,801, for such as recommended by the school building committee on September 10, 2025. Is there a second? Second. Second by Ms. Robinson. And I'm going to just briefly speak to my motion and then open up. First, there was a meeting, there were a number of meetings where we went through and looked at some alternatives. There were things we did not include in the design ultimately, like the metal roof. We, you know, we looked at, we eliminated some canopies, we eliminated some trees, we deleted timber for beams. We did decide to keep the playground equipment, which was the number-one request of the kids at Runlet. That's about $200,000, so it's a small ticket item, but they do add up. We, you know, one of the biggest ticket items is an auditorium. You know, when we looked at the option for sort of a cafetorium like this, and we heard from a lot of members of the community that they would like to see an auditorium, so we looked, we developed a proposal that is for retractable seats, so it is a multipurpose room as well as an auditorium, but with more purpose than the 30, 40-year-old new activities room at Runlet. So those items, again, we can put them up on the screen, Jack, if we could, so if board members want to have those to look at. I will say, I've been on the board seven-ish years, probably this month, but this, so this discussion started well before I joined the board, and every board successfully has looked at renovation and ultimately decided it is not a cost-effective option. And, you know, I started the same place, well, can we fix it up? But it's not a question of not being maintained. It's 70-year-old electrical systems, 70-year-old plumbing systems, a foundation that doesn't meet current building codes, and once you start opening up things, you have to meet current building codes. A building that isn't designed for how we teach in 2026 versus 1957, a building that was sort of slapped up to deal probably with an influx of students for the baby boom, so doesn't have like the good bones of Concord High School or the, or other buildings, or the Woodbury School, because we've looked at all these. We've gone to other, I've gone to other schools, middle school projects, what can we do? What can we take? And I've also watched, like, the costs escalate, and it's not because new things were added to the project. You know, we took out the gold-plated ballroom years ago. You know, we're not doing gold tiles on the floors, it's polished cement. You know, what we put in the building is to make it last longer. It's just a reality that construction costs have gone up, and if you don't think I've glanced at the estimates, I have, maybe I've just had more... Maybe I've just had more time to gradually accept it. But this idea that, like, we've just started this, we have been working on this for 10 years, but this new iteration, you know, we tried to keep as much of the design that we had a public hearing on two years ago. It's not a very dissimilar design. And we've, and it's been out there, and we've looked at it continually, and we've looked at renovations continually. So that, and you can go back and watch hours of meetings of the building committee and the board having these discussions. Sometimes, you know, public hearings and, you know, sometimes people come and they speak, and then they don't wait for the answers. So I hope, you know, if you have questions, please, you know, we're always happy to speak. But we have done our due diligence, and the part that gets me is, seven years ago, I had different hopes for who would be in the legislature, who would be governor, what they would consider priorities. That, I don't see Building Aid coming back. What I see is just construction costs going higher. And I don't wanna do this in an emergency. I wanna do it thoughtfully. So I will be voting yes.
Ms. Meeker.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh, and thank you, everybody, for being here. Thank you, everybody, that's sticking around for this discussion. I will be supporting the motion tonight. I am, I feel it in my bones, how passionate everyone is about this issue on both sides. I absolutely want to do what is best for our community and for our children. I have asked all the same questions of our architects and staff about the ways that we can reduce cost. I feel that we have done a really good job of getting as far down as we can. What we've got on this list that we could remove is very small in comparison to the total cost, and we're taking away things that have specifically been asked for by students and teachers. So I think we've come to a really good place in terms of design and cost, the best we can do, understanding the situation that we're in with current construction. I just, I know that there has been a lot of tension in the last couple of years. And for me, I really want to walk forward in joy. I want to be excited that this school is gonna happen for our community, that we're in it together for our kids and for our future. It's just something that I think we all really care about, and we all have priorities and we all have decisions that we have to make. This is not an easy decision. But I really do think that, you know, it would be so exciting to sort of walk into this new plan together and in a joyful way.
Anyone else like Ms. Boucher?
Yeah, I'll just, I just wanna say a couple things.
You gotta speak in.
I would like to say just a couple things. As many of you know, I've been very vocal in moving this vote forward. No more delays. I am troubled when I continually hear lame duck vote. Their previous vote, whatever date it was, in December, was before I arrived on the board. I was happy that a vote took place at that time because I wasn't privy to the information that everyone had worked hard on. Every single year will be a lame duck vote because there will be new people on the board who have to start again and again. That is a delay and a delay and a delay. We'll ask the same questions, another delay and delay. We have to trust the people who've come before us, or we will never progress in this entire city on any project because we will always have any kind of lame duck vote. I also am very frustrated, I agree with Ms. Hastings, is that when someone starts to threaten me, I no longer want to listen. So I can't listen to anyone continually stand up here and threaten us over and over again. To me, that's just, I just discredit what they have to say. But the number-one thing that I also hear is that people didn't listen to who came out to the public hearing in December. If you want us to tally that, I've counted 41 people who say no delays, and I counted 16 who spoke in favor of some sort of delay, whether going back to the planning board in some fashion. So if we're just looking at who spoke tonight, more than double the people have said, "Yes, they want no delays and they'd like to build now," then I'm listening to the people in this room and those who also were frustrated in the December vote. I'm listening now, and I hear 41 people that say no delays. So my vote, just like I've been very honest with the public up to now, will be yes to move forward for no more delays.
Mr. Richards.
Thank you very much, and thank you to so many people who have come out, not only tonight. I have been working on this project since 2016. In 2017, there was a visioning process, and believe me, we have cut a lot from that. I was not here, though, back when people said, "We're not going to build anything until we've paid off the debt." I've never heard that, but I know I've heard it from you and that. But that's not even, if we were to do that, we have eight buildings. We would build a new school every 240 years. That's not a practical approach, and it's not how you do it in your home. You don't wait until you pay off your house before you buy a car. I, many of you know, I was very much in favor of the broken ground site. I represented, I'm from Zone A, and my constituents wanted a school as soon as possible. They wanted a new school, and they wanted it to cost the least, as much as we could cut the price. That's why I voted for broken ground, because it was less expensive. I still represent those folks. You know, they don't let me, they don't let me take time off. And I still represent them for having the school that our kids need, that it's, you know, that it's done as soon as we can, and that it is the lowest cost. And that's why I'm supporting building at the South Street site because now we have rebates and grants that we can take advantage of. Pause means increase in cost, right? It's just the way it is. And, you know, I was here when we paused in 2018 or 2019 to wait for Building Aid to come back. That hasn't helped us. Do I like the price of it at a $155? No, I don't. I think it's very expensive. But then again, do I like the fact that a two, a three-bedroom, two-bath house costs $450,000 when it only cost $225,000 in 2017? No, but that's the way it is. That is the world that we live in, and I will support this motion because it's the best for our students, and in the long run, it's the best for our taxpayers and our community. Thank you.
Ms. Campbell.
I was very fortunate that when I ran, my districts were very much Runlet, broken ground, real and care. But what they did say to me was, "Just build it." And here I am, my second year in the term, and that's what I'm hearing from the districts, "Just build the school." My vote will be affirmative. I will support this. There's another analogy I just wanted to bring forward. It reminded me. When I first started dating my husband, we both would always wear black flat shoes for work, right? He would spend $150, $200 on this pair of shoes, and I would spend $40 on mine and pay less because I was like, "I'm not gonna spend this much money on these shoes. Who needs these fancy shoes for $150 when I can pay less for 40 bucks?" Well, guess what? Over the years, he has the same pair of boots because he spent the money on something that was quality and would last long, would have the materials that would last this test of time. Meanwhile, I'm buying a new pair of shoes every other week because I'm wearing out the soles because they're cracked, because they scuff so easily, and they're actually breaking. So I wound up spending more money over time because I didn't want to invest right in that moment. So I see that with this school. We can invest in it now and build something that will last and will be a beautiful, safe space, where we don't have to worry about gun shootings in our schools because our teachers deserve that. So my vote yes is so I can sleep at night knowing that I'm not gonna make comments like, "Oh, we don't have to worry about accessibility." We do because every child counts in this community today, tomorrow, and the future when I'm long gone. So my vote is for our children and for the future that I will never see, and I hope they enjoy this school.
Ms. Sadowski.
Thank you. I wanna thank the building committee for your tireless efforts. I wanna thank all of our staff here tonight and everybody who came out. Thank you very much for your time. I will be supporting the motion. Things are getting more expensive. We are not going to be able to count on this date to save us. And yeah, so that's my reasoning.
I wanna quickly support something that Pam said. We had a situation at the high school where there was a culvert that sunk. And it was a big, years ago, I saw a fish swimming in there once in a flood. And as the work was done, we repaired it. It sunk. We repaired it. It sunk. And so our facilities manager here had to really look into it to fix it. And I don't know if you saw all the construction in front of the high school. The bottom line was, when that addition was built to Concord High School as a money-saving procedure, likely, they just built the school on top of a brook. They didn't divert the brook. They just hoped for the best. And so 96, so they got about 30 years of no problems, and now you guys are all paying for the sinkhole. In looking at the middle school costs and looking at what the district needs and how to do it right, so a school board 30 years down the road isn't paying for a problem that we saw, that we caused, I guess I'm sharing this to share that sometimes the money has to be spent to do it right. I don't feel good about it. Another question I had was, "Why do we need all these fancy fields?" So here's Memorial Field. Memorial Field has to be completely dug up and re, it's a mess. Why is it a mess? Because in 1971, they took a cost-saving measure and didn't redo all of the drainage in the back corner of that field. So now, all these years later, y'all have to pay for Memorial Field because they saved money at the time. So have we had years and years of great fun at Memorial Field? We have. But if had they done it right in 1971, we might be changing something to astroturf, but we wouldn't be having to dig up an entire park. So why am I sharing this? Because all of this has two sides. All of it has people on both sides that matter. And every penny spent, regardless where it comes from or how much it is, in this case, will go toward a good thing. I don't feel good about it, but I just want you to know that those thoughts are in my head as well.
Mr. Richards.
Yeah, I wanna add one thing to, and I'm speaking to the board members as well as addressing everyone out here, is that although I support this, and I think the rest of the board or the majority of this board supports this, that doesn't mean that we're not going to put this out to bid and really hold our construction contractors to task. That doesn't mean that we still don't stop trying to look at every single aspect of the building and keeping the quality, but finding ways to make it less expensive. This is, you know, I have been on 11 boards now, and the one thing I will tell you is that every single one of those take their responsibility to be as judicious with the taxpayers' money as seriously as you do. And I think this board is the same. So we will cut, we're committed to making this as affordable and as less painful as we possibly can.
Thank you. I was actually gonna raise that point. What we're doing is setting a cap, not a floor. And the hope is that we will continue to, you know, the bids will come in better or we will find other places where we can value engineer. Would anyone like to make any motions to amend the motion? Does anyone have any other comments or questions? That, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote. Ms. Meeker, would you call the roll? Yes. Ms. Boucher.
Yes.
Ms. Campbell.
Yes.
Ms. Hastings.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins.
While I want a quick build, I'm going to vote no to support my rando retirees, so I'm a no.
All good. Ms. Higgins was a no. Mr. Richards.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. Sadowski.
Yes.
Ms. Walsh.
Yes.
And I am a yes. Motion passed. Mushing carries eight to one. Is there any other business before the board tonight? If not, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A second, a second, a second. Second, Ms. Boucher. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Me to adjourn.